And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Education, Tuesday the sixth of October, 2020. Councilmember Bowman, here. Councilmember Nowakowski.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Corvus President.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our education committee meeting. You take it from the top, Sean.
Item number one, resolution on district and charter school sustainability in the city of Buffalo.
Okay, item number one, this is a resolution from, that was submitted. Board member Larry Scott is here to speak on it. Let me just see if Larry's in. Are you here, Larry?
He is on, sir.
All right, we'll just wait a second for him.
I am here. Just had to unmute. Sorry about that.
No problem. Take it away, Larry. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Chairman Bowman and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to submit a record of the Board of Education resolution on district and charter school sustainability in the city of Buffalo. To begin, just, I want to state that we as a board believe that charters have a place in Buffalo. Two of them are authorized by the Board of Education currently. We believe many provide a quality education to our Buffalo students. I know many parents personally who send their children to charter schools, and I highly respect this choice. This resolution, as it is titled, is also about the sustainability of our existing Buffalo charters. I have heard firsthand from Buffalo Charter School leaders who have been impacted by the unchecked growth of charters in Buffalo. They are hurting with enrollment, retaining teachers, and forced cuts to programs and services. We have reached a breaking point for our district schools and existing charters surpassing 20% enrollment, far exceeding the 5% cap in the New York State Charter School statute of 1998, and New York City with a cap on charter expansion and at 11% charter enrollment. The projected increased cost to charters in the board budget is 153 million this year. Any annual state foundation aid increases that come to BPS leave to cover the continued increase in charter tuition. And as you know, we are now faced with significant cuts in state aid. We are pitting one group of students against another, and it is equally unfair and wrong. It is the board's fiduciary and ethical responsibility to take action and alter this path for both our district and charter school students. If the SUNY Board of Trustees and the Board of Regents does not begin to respect the will of the local Board of Education in Buffalo, we are prepared to commence legal proceedings in order to fully and comprehensively remedy the demonstrated harm to students enrolled in the Buffalo City School District as a result of the saturation of charter schools beyond the limits in the original charter school statute of 1998. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Councilmembers, any comments? Not seeing any. Was anybody else here with any comments on this specific item? With that said, Larry, can you speak to some of the financial impact you're seeing with the charter schools? And can you talk a little bit about, is it a reimbursement with the charter student? Can you just speak a little bit about the financial impact that you're seeing? I know you touched on it, but just in a little deeper essence. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Crestis might be better able to answer more specifically the impact. What I will say is that, over the years, we we have wanted to increase staffing in music, art, mental health professionals, especially mental health professionals to better implement restorative practices to address disproportionality, to address our suspension rates. And with an increase in charter school tuition in our budgets, it makes it very difficult for us to direct a commitment towards increasing staffing in those areas. So, you know, that to me is where I see directly it impacts staffing that impacts our district students in each of our schools.
Thank you. Dr. Crestis, did you want to speak on it?
Yeah, I can, I can give you some general information. I know Mr. Scott certainly, you know, framed the challenge as it exists, and I just want to echo and restate his point, that this is not about an ideological opposition to charter schools. The Buffalo Public Schools does not believe that public education is proprietary in that if you're a child and you live in the city of Buffalo, you know, somehow we're entitled to serve you with your education, and your parents should enroll you in our district. We, that is, that has not been the belief of our, of our board for years, for decades now. What's happened, though, is that the embrace that the board has traditionally had for charter schools is, is no longer sustainable. About $154 million goes towards paying tuition. About 20 million of that is reimbursed to the district. But the, the problem is, when we get a state aid increase, which is typically about 13 to 15 million a year, all of that money goes towards paying the next year's increase in tuition, however that formula is calculated. So you have the phenomenon of state aid coming in, increases in state aid, hard-earned by our Western New York delegation, and it goes right out the door to support charter schools. That's not the charter school's fault, by the way. That's, that's because that's how the legislation and the funding formulas are written in Albany. But, so it's unsustainable from the point of view that we are now pitting one group of students, kids sitting in traditional public school seats, against, you know, kids just trying to get a great education sitting in a charter school. And the, the other point that I think is very important is for folks to understand, it's not a zero-sum game. So, for example, if a new charter school opens with 150 students, and, you know, two BPS kids from this class, and two BPS kids from this class, and 10 from this school, and that, you know, go to populate those 150 new seats at the charter school, the, the district doesn't save money by those students leaving. The two kids that left a classroom that had 27 kids in it and now has 25 kids in it, that classroom still has to function. All of the expenses continue to exist. So, it's very important for people to understand, it's not a zero-sum game. When a charter school opens, the district does not save money. It still has all of its current costs to operate its schools and its infrastructure while still in place.
Thank you, Dr. Crestis. Is, is that, any other comments? Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, we've, we've heard the charter schools make their case. We've heard the district make their case. Everyone basically kind of concedes that charter school students are district students. I just wanted you to kind of elaborate on what these costs and expenses are that you say that the district still has to maintain when a student goes to a, or the parent of the student chooses to send their child to a charter school.
Absolutely, Councilmember Wingo. So, it's, it's really just kind of the physics of the thing. The district has 60 schools in which approximately 33,000 students are, are spread amongst them. Each classroom, on average, has anywhere from 18 to 27, to 18 to 27 students. And when parents exercise their, their, their right to disenroll a child from the traditional public school and enroll them in a charter school, we, we don't have the phenomenon where, you know, 25 kids from one classroom or 25 kids from a grade level at a school leave that school. What the phenomenon is and has been since 1999 is, you know, a spattering of students from all around the elementary schools, for example, will leave. So if one or two children leave from a grade level at this school, three children from a grade level, at the same grade level at this other school, none of it has the effect of positioning the district to cut costs as a result of kids leaving, because only a very small percentage of students overall leave. So we still have to run, for example, three third-grade classes, three fourth-grade classes at all of the schools, because only one or two students are, are leaving from a school from those grade levels. So the point is, it, it just doesn't work to say, well, you know, the kids are leaving, you don't have expenses associated with those students. I, I wish that that were true, but it's not true, because a teacher is still getting paid to teach a class that now, let's say, has 25 kids in it instead of 26, all of the expenses around the infrastructure that exists. Now, but, but I want to be very clear, that is not to begrudge the operations of a charter school, existing or a new charter school. They have every right under the law and under the wishes of this community. 9,000 students go to charter schools in Buffalo. So, the, the wishes of the community certainly are very clear that they would like this, these options. And since the, since 2000, the Buffalo Public Schools has been really progressive in supporting parental choice, supporting parental enrollment. This is really a question about the sustainability. And at this
I don't, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm, I'm trying to listen for the answer to the question, which is, what are the expenses and these costs that are associated with each student who leaves to go from the school district to a charter school? And you, you, you may mention the fact that you have teachers currently, right now, who are teaching. Some teachers only have 10 students in their class. Some teachers have 25, 28 students in the class. Those teachers, if they're on the same step, on the same level, they're getting the same salary. So what are these expenses that are associated with each student as if there is some type of cost per student that the district is losing because they are going to charter schools? What is that?
Yeah. First, I, I don't think I said 10. I may have said 16 or 15. If there's a classroom that has 10 students, that would be a special, special education class. But, but let's say, on average, if, if general education classes have 25 students in them, the district budgets between 80 and $100,000 for the cost of salary and all of the benefits for the teacher that is in that classroom. The district has all of the infrastructure costs that exist to support that particular classroom. So that's all of the utilities, all of the repairs around the building, the transportation, the food service, all of the administration, the teacher aides that support the overall work of the school. So there are a number of associated school costs that, that go towards that. So what, the, the, the point is, the, the costs are there in our classroom, just like they are in the, in the charter school classroom. The, the only point I was trying to alert you to is that the, the point which I've often heard made, which is, well, when the money follows the student, that is a very noble belief. It's, it's actually something that, you know, really reasonable people can agree with, but I don't want people to have the impression that the expenses also follow the student. The district still has expenses to run a classroom, and it has the same expenses, just has, now has them, there are 25 kids in the room instead of 26. And then in the course of the year, bear in mind that many charter schools do return students back to the district and new students enroll in the district. So it isn't as if, when a new charter opens up, it relieves the district of expenses. It, it just doesn't. But those are, I, I tried to list for you what the general costs are, and some of the numbers are around each classroom.
And if I could just add, Councilmember Wingo, on a macro level with our budget, right now it breaks down to about 130 million goes towards the charter school tuition for each student, and then approximately 12 to 15 million for transportation, special education, other administrative costs that the district provides directly to charter schools.
Okay. The, I guess the spirit of the question, since there's going to be a general response to it, so the spirit of the question is, I don't think we're pitting students against students who are in district schools and charter schools. I think the spirit of the question is, why does it feel that, why does it feel to me that we are villainizing charter schools as far as the funding is concerned, when we can't specifically say where they are exactly impacting the budget for the school districts other than we have a couple of students missing in this class, a couple of students missing in that class? Where is the overall explanation that would help the folks watching right now understand the dilemma of the school district? Because right now, I'm not hearing it, and if I'm not hearing it, and I've been pretty well versed on what's been happening with the school district, as I have, all of my students have graduated from Buffalo Public Schools, minus two who are still going through the district. So help me understand as a parent, help all these other parents who are watching understand, why is it that the argument is always charter schools are adversely impacting the finances of the school district when there is no specific area other than, I guess what was stated earlier, had to do with the money that was given to them and paid in tuition, where only a portion of it is reimbursable?
I can, I can certainly answer that. Probably the best example is last year, the district received about a $15 million foundation aid increase in the state budget, and yet had $18 million worth of new charter school expenses. So that meant that all of the state aid increase that came in our foundation aid came in one door and, and out the other. And students sitting in traditional public school seats were unable to benefit from that money. So if the superintendent in the board wanted to add some type of program, wanted to add a certain type of, of teacher to support this school or that school, they were unable to do it. And again, I want to be clear, because I, I don't want to leave you with the impression that anyone in the Buffalo Public Schools is villainizing charter schools. It's not their fault. That this is the funding formula, we all
It's not, it's not their fault, but there was still a resolution passed so that there was a moratorium put on charter schools formed in the city of Buffalo. Is that correct?
Well, this, this resolution now takes the place of that one. This is the resolution you should look at, not the moratorium resolution from 2017. This is now the position, this resolution is the position of the board and the superintendent, the one that you reviewed today.
And if I could just add, as a board member, when we're looking at our budget and with what Dr. Crestis shared, that we have an increase that comes in and immediately leaves to fund charter schools, when I'm hearing from constituents about how they want more art teachers, they want more music teachers, they want more mental health professionals, reading and math specialists, which I know, working in a suburban district, that our district's city school students are far understaffed in all those areas. When we talk about or make a request as a board to increase staffing in these areas, we don't have the funding to do it, because any increase that's coming in from the state is immediately leaving to fund an increase to charter schools.
Thank you, Larry. Councilmember Wingo?
So is that the, is that, so the, the position of the district is to essentially say charter schools are hurting the district's ability to form new programs?
It, it is, the way the formula is set up from the state, the way the authorization process is set up from the state, 1998 state statute, is making it difficult for us to adequately fund programming. But I also add that I, as I, I mentioned to start off, that I'm hearing from charter school leaders that this is hurting their enrollment, and it's impacting their programming and services that they're providing their students. It's not just hurting our district's students, it's hurting our current existing locally-run grassroots-run charter schools.
What's the what, though? What's the what? You said this is hurting charter schools as well. What, what's that what? What are you, what are you referring to? What's hurting the charter schools as well?
Well, if they're enrolling fewer students, then they're getting less money to that charter school.
And what is the reason why they're
Difficult for them to maintain any type of services, programming, and staffing that they currently have. So if they want to invest in a, a mental health professional, an additional mental health professional, for example, they then have less money to, to tap into to fund that position.
Okay, but what is the reason why they have less enrollment, though?
Because if you continue to expand charter schools, have more of them, there are a few students then that are going to be interested and apply to that charter school.
Is that evidence-based?
When I'm hearing directly from charter school leaders that their kindergarten enrollment is low, and I'm getting frequent flyers in my mailbox to enroll my children in a charter school, to me, that seems like there is a concern from some charter school leaders here in Buffalo that they're hurting on enrollment.
All right. So, so anecdotally speaking, then that's, that's the reason why, because charter schools have been seeing less enrollment. That, that, anecdotally speaking, your friends in, in charter schools have seen less enrollment. So we don't really have any data that will suggest this is the case. Now, Dr. Crestis, have we seen any leveling out of enrollment for the district and K and pre-K?
The district enrollment is generally flat over the last few years. Councilmember Wingo, there's actually one more point to answer your question, and it's in the resolution as well. It's mentioned in the resolution. One of the other issues that is a serious challenge for all of school districts and charter schools is the teacher shortage, which is basically, it's begun to hit us, and it's only going to get worse over the next decade. The redundancy in what the new charter schools offer, which is essentially most of the charters, new charter schools are offering general education elementary seats, has exacerbated the teacher shortage among certified teachers, which charter schools are not necessarily required to have, but I know that they seek. And what, what's happening because of the saturation of charter schools in Buffalo is you have everyone struggling to find not just a certified teacher, but a high-quality certified teacher, with which parents in charter schools want, parents in traditional public schools want. So, the, the teacher shortage is an issue for both charter schools and traditional public schools, as well as the fact that you're now going to have charter schools spread so thin because of the saturation of them that, you know, the, the charter school, you know, wants to have new programs too. They want to pay their staff well. They want to make sure they're doing right by their parents. They need funds to do that, that job. And if they have an ever-shrinking pool of students over time, it's going to make it hard for them to, to do their good work.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, if you would just indulge me just to go back so I can finish this, just other line of questioning regarding the, the funding. Just, just please, if you could just surmise, with all, all brevity we have in us, which I know is kind of hard, but if, if this formula is so damning, if this formula is so destructive or hurtful to the district, why hasn't the state changed the formula? And why hasn't anyone advocated for the state to change the formula? Why hasn't the district submitted a resolution to make an appeal to the state to change the formula and how it's working so that it would not adversely impact the school district? So that everyone could basically operate in harmony, if that's such a thing?
Right, right. That's an important question. Every year, Dr. Cash sits with a joint budget and education committee that is composed of the state assembly and the state senate. He meets with all of the chairs of that committee, and then in his oral testimony, he, he makes that request every single year. He does it directly through our delegation, and then he goes to Albany and in a hearing every year does it. We, we can't answer in Buffalo why there hasn't been a change. Every district that has charter schools in New York State has been asking for a change in the, in the funding formula or in the mechanism for how charter schools are funded. But the superintendent Cash has annually made it one of his top priorities when he presents before the Joint Legislative Committee every February.
Okay, I don't know if Larry wanted to add to that.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'd have to look back at previous resolutions to see if it was specifically indicated in there. But we, I know, similar to what Dr. Crestis has mentioned, that the board in letters to our state lawmakers have recommended this change. I also had an op-ed that was in the newspaper, I believe, in the fall of this, this school, this last school year. And it, that was one of the recommendations, that there be a separate formula or funding stream to fund charter schools and charter school students.
And one last thing I can add, that the Big Five school districts, which is the Organization for Boards of Education of the largest city school districts, they advocate for a change in the formula, as does the New York State School Boards Association. So there's a lot of people who, to your point, Councilmember Wingo, are advocating for a resolution. You know, experts put together the funding formula. It's clear that it doesn't work. It's no longer sustainable anywhere in New York State. You know, our expectation would be that experts would fix it.
So being that we, we, we know this, and clearly we have the data to substantiate this, right? Why don't the Big Five then get together and make an appeal to the state legislature so that they can make these changes? Surely, they can't ignore the tens of thousands of students that are being represented by these districts, because if this is such a huge problem that I know that you've been talking about for a while, then how come the needle doesn't seem to be moved on it, and why doesn't the legislature seem to be inclined to make any type of changes?
Yeah, I, I can't really speak about why the legislature has been frozen in addressing this.
What I mean is, when the Big Five does it going to coalesce around this with the other districts?
They do.
And all the districts make a joint effort in trying to make this appeal to the state legislature?
They, they do. For the Big Five, it's, it's a top agenda item. In fact, last year, I think it was their primary agenda item to take up with the governor and with the legislature. By the way, one last point. Dr. Cash also meets with the executive team from the governor's office around this issue, because the governor actually would need to be, would need to embrace a change in how charter schools are funded, because it would become part of the budget negotiation every year. So not only does Dr. Cash advocate around this issue with the leaders of the state legislature, but also with the governor's office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you all. Okay, I have a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Second by Councilmember Nowakowski. Next item?
Item number two, FBI, Buffalo citizens.
Item's open.
Thank you. I was happy to receive a call from former council member of the South District, Mary Martino. Mary is looking to help in the situation we're in right now with virtual learning, and she had some ideas, so. And she has some partners that are looking to, you know, jump in and help out. So Jump in and help out. So, um, Mary, uh, please take it away. Thank you for joining.
It's good to see everybody again. Um, I just wish it was under less stressful times than what we're all experiencing right now. Uh, the one person I would like to introduce is Ian Magnus. He's president of our nonprofit. Um, and he can explain where we're hoping to go with this. Ian, are you there?
Uh, yes, I am. Thank you, Mary. Uh, thank you very much. Mary just introduced me. My name's Ian Magnus. I'm the chapter president for the. FBI Buffalo Citizens Academy Alumni Association. Uh, we're actually a uh. Community-based nonprofit organization separated apart from the FBI. Um, what we do is we promote a safer community to through a process of uh educating business media. Uh, minority religious government and other community leaders about law enforcement. But what we also do is we we provide a lot of uh community outreach to the um to the public and to basically the community. And providing assistance where necessary or where required. Um, that being said, um, we. Have, we are actually working on um a number of events and one of them is partnering with Mission Ignite. Now, to to give you a little bit uh more of an insight about mission, Mission Ignite. I have invited Ben Bissel, who actually represents um Mission Ignite. And he would be able to explain to you the um, the functions and also the process that the. We go through in actually providing um children or school kids with um refurbished laptops. And uh equipment that they require during this COVID nineteen um, during this COVID nineteen uh pandemic. So I I will pass it on to Ben to explain uh the process. Are you there, Ben?
Yes, I'm here. Um, I will continue the passing um to Christine, who's our executive director. She'll start out, but I. I can provide all the details as we we move into that.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for inviting us to the table today. Uh, many of you may remember us as Computers for Children. A couple of years ago, we uh. We renamed ourselves to Mission Ignite because of the diversity of programs that we were offering to our community. Uh, I want to thank uh all of you as well as our uh FBI Citizens Academy, which I am past member of. Uh, and uh, the the goal is obviously to help respond. As over the last twenty-three years of providing uh digital divide. Uh, opportunities and equipment, training and um connectivity to uh to sources. So uh with that, we have reached out to our academy friends and asked them to help us uh find equipment. Because uh prior to COVID, we had um shelves of equipment that was donated from from companies all over our region. Uh, to that point, uh Ben Bissel and his team have uh deployed computers through COVID, trying to come up to a response. And so I will invite Ben to describe what he's doing.
Christine, and thank you, everyone. Um, so basically the gist of it is we uh when our organization has been refurbishing. Um, computers for a long period of time and been deploying these to the community, whether through donation programs. Or um in affordable sales to institutions and organizations. And so. Um, we partner with many different organizations um over our history and this year have actually uh, we've been producing ten times the rate. Uh, that we used to produce last year, just to give kind of a a an idea of the scale. And so therefore. Um, we have gone completely through our laptop inventory, as Dan, who's on this call, also could attest to, uh, we ran out. Um, and I know many other communities um you were in high need and continue to be in high need. Because there's a backlog of equipment for cer- you know, certain groups. And so. Um, this transition to remote learning um has really put pressure on our community. And so. Um, we've, you know, stepped up somewhat to the challenge and continue to grow uh in that area, but the the big need and is to really spread the word that if there is. Uh, unused older uh devices that we could redeploy into our community, we would welcome. Uh, it to come to us so that we can get that out to the community. Um, and so I'm happy to go into more detail if there are uh questions. Uh, we have right now uh four different uh schools that are in need. Um, not, so charter schools actually and um. Uh, private schools are often the ones that are are most stretched in this area. Um, yet many community members are also in need and we expect that this may continue if if the the problem. Um, uh, or the challenge of COVID nineteen continues to exist and and the need to um continue to learn remotely. Uh, due mostly to the fact that e- even these devices that have come out are are in the hands of youth. And so uh they may not last as long as we we hope they'd last. So uh it's a continuing need. Um, and so happy to answer any questions on the program.
Thank you, Ben. I I, right before I get to your council member, I just wanted to mention that yeah, I um with Dr. Cressy, I'm just kind of hoping to facilitate. Um, you know, communication and see where they could be helpful with um, you know, how it would fit into the Buffalo uh public school system.
Well, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and and thank you uh to the guests for the outstanding work that you're doing on behalf of children. It's. Uh, it's powerful work and it it couldn't be more timely. Um, what I can do, uh, maybe the easiest way. Is for uh me to provide, Mr. Chairman, uh your staff with our contact person. For all of our IT issues and maybe your staff could make a connection and they can see if there's any gaps that. This wonderful group can can help us with. So I'll do that today.
And who might that person be, please?
Um, it's there are two people that I'll provide the contact information for. Uh, one of them is Sarah Edwards. And he is the person that manages all of the device distribution. Uh, so uh that would be the person that you'll start with and I'll make sure that uh the chairman's staff has her contact information today.
Alright, I recently did have a conversation with somebody from the tech department. And like many of the schools, um, there's a great need for additional devices. Um, it's a. I can't imagine uh filling the need for every student in Buffalo Public Schools or any school system. Uh, you know, so my hat goes off to all of you for the great job that you're doing. Having said that, you know, the thought is there are so many companies that right now. Are actually upgrading the devices for their employees who are forced to work from home. Either for safety reasons during the pandemic or um many of their employees. Because the students are um, um, you know, kids are. Working from, are going to class from home. Um, the parents are now, they they need devices. The kids need the devices. So the thought is, is companies and others upgrade. What are they doing um with the older devices? And we need to get the word out so that they will, you know, know where they can donate them. So that they can be refurbished and that we can, in fact, get them into the hands of students. So that when this pandemic is over, our students, you know, we've all got kids, grandchildren, et cetera. We want them as unscathed as possible. So that was one of the purposes of us uh coming before this committee today as well. Was to just start generating word to please anyone that has the ability to donate to Mission Ignite. Um, that they will be in good hands and that they will be well-used by students. I know even one of my own kids. Um, they've already had um one device. She's a teacher. And um that device went down. It was a brand-new device and she was scrambling, trying to get something so that she could go online with her students. So. Um, again, I appreciate the frustration everybody's going through, but if we can get the word out. And we can help offset some of the um issues that the um school boards have. It would just be a win-win. That's my thought.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't, I didn't have anything, but I just want to commend this group. Um, this is what we're talking about when we talk about how during crisis we come together. And we become creative because we know the school board will be coming under um some strains very shortly if things continue. As far as our revenues are short from the state and unfortunately, unfortunately, it seems as though. Um, the target is education and um it's just an unfortunate situation, but it's the situations like these. Um, that continue to help our young people continue to stay the course, even with those other things going on. You know, there are people who want to see our young people succeed. And I want to thank Ms. Martino and this incredible group one. Um, their efforts because of all uh working together, we can make a difference. So thank you for what you're doing. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Wyatt. Uh, Larry Scott?
And if I could just echo that, I just, on behalf of the board, want to thank each of you for. Um, any help that you can provide because this is a huge challenge, as you know, for the district, for our students. Um, since March, the district has pursued purchasing more devices. Um, and we're still waiting for devices for students pre-K to first grade, second grade to twelfth grade. We're able, we have been able to provide devices to them. So any help, any support you can provide us. Would certainly be welcomed and appreciated. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Um, may I, may I say something? Yeah, okay. Um, thank you very much for all the, all the nice words. Uh, now, I just want to um. To let you know that we are actually here to assist uh any community within the Western New York region. It it may be um refurbished laptops, it may be helping out with masks, uh supplying a mask. It may be anything that would benefit the community and help the community grow and be safer. And um that's, that's what the FBI Buffalo Citizens Academy Alumni Association is all about. We are here to support the community one hundred percent. And if you have any needs. Um, whatsoever, you can approach us and let us know and we can work this in to our planning. Uh, into our planning and into our events to promote um any, any needs in the community. Um, one other um event that we worked on recently was with the the Family Justice Center. To promote their vehicle against violence um drive, drive-in donation um uh event. Now, they have more events coming up and we are also assisting them. So whoever comes to us for requiring assistance, we are there to help. We are all for the community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So, um, thank you, Brian. Uh, so it, I I, you know, and we have been longstanding partners with our community. Uh, Dr. Cressy, we've worked together over programs in the past. We appreciate the partnership. Um, and uh if there are any other issues that coming along. Um, we'd be open to have conversations at the table. Please know that we are here to help uh any way we can. So thank you.
Thank you, Christine. I think, uh, you know, we have a great resource with the FBI uh Citizens Academy and I think a great connection is uh. Taking place here. Thank you, Mary, for bringing this to our attention. Um, if no one else, I'll um ask for a motion to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
By Councilmember Wyatt. Next item, please.
Item number three, Shapiro.
You're on mute, John.
Item number three, Shapiro, perk for New York's rich areas, first dibs on top public school.
Items open.
Thank you. Uh, this item was um filed by Councilmember Wyatt. Uh, Councilmember, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this was just an interesting article and. I'm not sure and I I'm afraid to say if this was on Mr. Radford's page or something, but it was somewhere and I started, I read it. Um, because unfortunately, there were some residents in my district who applied to City Honors and didn't get in. And I know that Mr. Radford has talked, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about um the admission process for City Honors. And just reading this article, it seems this may, this one in particular um seemed to be very um convoluted or. There's a lot of different moving parts to it. And I just wanted to hear from Mr. Radford if we're moving forward on this. Because, you know, um, the person that I talked to was so distraught um that her child was not able to get in. And I didn't know what the, I don't know what else to say. Um, I, you know, I'm hope, I know I heard that there were some changes. I've heard that things had improved. But I don't know for a fact. Um, there's a lot of people that want their child to have the best education and we know City Honors is one of the best in the country. Um, so 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 especially for a child of color to have that type of opportunity to get a leg up on their future. Is truly essential. And if you have a parent that they're working hard to get their child that opportunity and then they're not able to do it. You know, you know, I just wish I had answers. So I just wanted to hear, you know, how, if this is moving forward. Um, how I can be of assistance, um, where we are because there's a lot of parents. Who, again, want the best for their child and we know that we have a jewel in City Honors. Mr. Radford?
Thank you, Councilmember Wyatt. Um, for yet, and I, yes, I did post, thank you for your attention to this detail. Um, I think it's probably important before I speak uh to Dr. Cressy is the one who would have the info, the current information. Uh, on where this stands at in Buffalo. Um, you know, as you know, we filed the Office of Civil Rights complaint. Uh, many years ago, the Buffalo School District put together a corrective action plan. Um, where they said that they would increase the number of um minority students um at City Honors. Uh, that has not occurred at this point, at least of the students in um the general education uh component. So uh. You know, so to answer the question specifically, before I reply, um, I would like to see what the accurate information is. I know Larry Scott also uh put out some information related to this. Uh, and then the person that's put most current with the information in terms of parent leadership is Dr. Wendy Mistrada, who was also on. So, um, you know, the most current information will have to come from Dr. Cressy's in terms of. Uh, whether we've increased the number of minority students um in general education at City Honors.
Um, Dr. Cressy, are you uh able to speak on this? I know.
Well, I, yeah, I wasn't, you know, I didn't prepare to speak to it today, but certainly Mr. Radford is right. I do. You know, I always have some information at my fingertips that would be important to share. I guess the first thing I want to do is dispel. Um, what's a, what's a myth? City Honors is uh just one of several. Uh, what are called criteria-based schools in Buffalo. It is not the one that is the most popular for our students. It is not the one. That parents choose at the highest level uh for their children to uh compete for. And, for example, Da Vinci High School uh is our only high school that is a national. Uh, distinguished school of excellence. That's the highest award that the federal government issues to a school. Da Vinci High School is seventy-one percent non-white, twenty-nine percent white. City Honors uh enrollment is fifty-seven percent white, forty-three percent non-white. It is the school, it's correct to say that among our high schools. It is the school that has the greatest disproportionality with the overall district enrollment. Um, but it is nothing like the schools that are alluded to in that article. I took them a moment. Before the meeting to read that article of what's going on in New York City. And I would encourage you to to all, you know, check your numbers because the disproportionality where you have. Uh, competitive admissions schools in New York City that are almost unilaterally white. And middle-class or higher. Um, you know, that's, that type of disproportionality does not exist in any way, shape or form in Buffalo. Let me give you just a little more information. Hutch Tech uh is our most popular destination school for eighth graders. Going into ninth grade. Um, it is also a competitive admissions school uh that ranks you. By an exam, uh just like City Honors. That school is uh seventy-one percent non-white. Twenty-nine percent white. Frederick Law Olmsted one fifty-six, again, is probably just as popular. Uh, as City Honors, as far as uh which parents make it their top. Uh, one of their choices when they're going from eighth to ninth grade. The uh. Challenge there is that a lot of the seats are already filled because children from school sixty-four. If they don't go to another school, uh when they enter fifth grade, they go to Olmsted one fifty-six. So there's fewer seats available. Uh, but Olmsted High School, uh without question, is one of the uh most successful competitive admissions school. Schools in New York State. Uh, that is sixty-six percent non-white, thirty-four percent white. So, you know, among competitive admissions high schools, there's no comparison uh between what's happening in Buffalo. between what's happening in Buffalo and New York City. And that's why in 2018, the Office for Civil Rights, while they said you can always do more, and Dr. Cash has been the first one to say, we've got to do more. Because we would like to see greater proportionality amongst all of our schools in the district, including city honors. But the Office for Civil Rights terminated their monitoring in 2018 because they realized that the district had built into its operations the type of access, opportunity and quality that they're looking for when they monitor school districts. So that's not to say that there isn't a lot of work to do, and the work that Sam was involved in in 2014, I think, was essential to moving the district in the right direction. And there's still work to do. That kind of good work is never done. But I just want to, I want to be careful or caution you when you read articles about what's going on in New York City or other cities like Boston or Chicago. Buffalo is miles ahead of those large urban school districts as, as far as more proportional enrollment in its competitive admissions schools. And I mean, I just want to repeat that our top high school in the district with regard to recognition by the federal government, the only high school with a national distinction as a school of excellence is 71% non-white. So I, I just want to make sure you have a very complete picture of all of the great work that has been going on in our district.
Thank you, Dr. Krestes. Just as a point of order, because we started the meeting a little late, if we could all keep our comments to about three minutes. So we could get a little break before the meeting. So Councilmembers, get lunch. Dr. Er, actually, Councilmember Wingo.
Yeah, real quick, just want to ask a quick question. Now, you gave the statistics as it relates to the demographics of the school relating to ethnicity. Their criteria-based schools, and I want to really get to Mr. Radford. But the exams for each of these schools, is it the same exam to get into each school?
For city honors and for Olmstead 156, it is the same exam. For Hutch Tech, they have their own exam that they've selected and they've used over the years. Da Vinci High School uses transcripts. It is not an exam entrance school. They use the academic record of the applicants.
So could it be possible that the the demographics of each school is based on the criteria for each school?
No, I, I wouldn't necessarily say that. It's mostly due to which schools radiate with parents the most as far as the destination that they want for their children. That's always the primary consideration. Parents, we've, you know, it's been my experience that parents are still, you know, obviously very much engaged in, in making the decision of which school their child, you know, is going to attend.
Okay, last question. I'm all done, Mr. Chair. Why don't we have another school other than Olmstead and city honors that would utilize the same model to render the success that they've had? You know, as, as far as educating students, why isn't there more schools performing at these levels?
They, they don't have the same model. City honors is a completely different school than Olmstead 156. Olmstead 156 is a school that brings up gifted and talented students, but then admits students through competitive admissions. City honors is distinct in that it has a large proportion of IB courses and is able to issue an IB diploma. That's just one of the, the differences. Da Vinci High School is a program that has an early college component in which the students are taking college courses by the time they're sophomores. I mean, I can go on and on and on. The, the reason that they're all distinct is because the district over the decades has responded to the market in Buffalo, and parents have said, you know, generally, these are the types of schools we're very excited about. They're, and they're excited about all sorts of other criteria-based schools that we, that Superintendent Cash has just launched. We have special programs at Bennett. We have middle, early college, which is among our most popular schools as well. And we have enhanced career and technical education programs at schools like McKinley High School, which are very, very popular. So a district stays agile, it tries to respond to the needs and requests of parents. You know, parents generally, although I, I know Mr. Radford has advocated for another city honors, but parents who sit in our school district have not asked for another city honors school. And my worry would be that if we just did that and grew that school, you, you might get something different than what you intended. You may get more families who are now in private schools saying, oh, they opened up another city honors, and you would create kind of a white enclave mentality at a school, and no school district wants to do that. You want to make sure that you're very careful that you're responding to parents that are sitting in your traditional public school seats right now.
Councilmember Wyatt. You're on mute.
I just want to go real quick because I know we wanted Mr. Radford to speak. But Dr. Krestes, you, yeah, and I guess the, the article started out with a young lady who wanted to go to a certain school. And she was not able to go to that school. So that's the point, honestly, is that there are parents who have this perception of city honors, who want their child to go to city honors because they know it's the best. You're right, there's other schools that are, you know, Olmstead is in my district. I know that they do fantastic. But the, the article started out with a young lady that this was her choice, and she did not get in there. And so when, when a parent or family decides he want to get somewhere, and they have to use an alternative, it's still not a good thing. And I'm asking a question because you said that city honors has 43% non-white. What's the breakout? Because the whole issue, but behind city honors, I thought was African-Americans having access to that school. And so you said 43% non-white, but what's the breakdown of that number?
It's, let me go to your first point, Councilmember Wyatt. I, in, in the article, what, what struck me when I read that, the opening part of the article about the young person, that the young lady that does not get her choice, and of course, her heart is broken over that, and, and we understand that. But the challenge in that school district in New York City is that they have not, over time, created a portfolio of schools that will meet the needs of the various interests that students have. And Buffalo, really since the 1980s, from the beginning of the magnet system, has been very intentional in doing that. And in the last five years, I would say, under the leadership and stewardship of Dr. Cash, we've created even more specialty boutique programs specifically catering to the interests that parents have articulated. That's why, who would have thought that a large urban district would be building a brand new school right in the heart of downtown? But not our first culinary school, but our second culinary arts school. So Buffalo is, is, is really known nationally as a district that responds to the expressed needs of the parents and, and wants that our students want. The non-white of the 43%, the non-white breakout at city honors is generally, generally between 16 and 18% African-American between, and it changes each year, between nine and 12% Hispanic or Latino. And then a combination of new American and multiracial making up the rest of that. So, but, but let me be clear, let me be clear. No one is satisfied by those numbers because those are disproportionate to our district. Our district has between 48 and 51% African-American. You know, depending on the year. The, the important thing is though, rid, rid yourself of the myth that all roads lead to city honors. It's true that it is a great school. As is Da Vinci High School, as is Emerson School of Hospitality, as are so many of our other high school programs. And, and, and what I worry about is kind of the belief, which I find insulting to our parents, that they, they all want to go to this one school. There's just no data. There are no facts that support that. Now, but two things can be true at the same time. One is it is not the most popular destination high school, and parents are making a measured decision that they may not want to apply there. So that's true. But what is equally true is that we cannot rest until there's a greater resemblance to the proportionality of our city and the rest of the district, not just at city honors, but at every school. So a district has to be able to do, to your point, Councilmember Wyatt, has to be able to do two things at once to address these types of issues. Thank you.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, and I could let Dr. Mistrada just make her, make the comment to get the current information, then I'll summarize after that.
Yes.
Good afternoon, everyone. A couple of points that, that I'm hearing that I want to make. So the ranking is, you know, locally, came out again in Business First in June, that, that city honors is ranked number two for the, the region, and there are no other Buffalo public schools in that ranking. And nationally, we're ranked number 142. And I do say we because I have two kids in city honors. I'm very fortunate. And there are no other Buffalo schools in that national ranking. But I think really, there's, there's some things here to, to be specific about when we're talking about not the most requested high school because the majority of our kids come in in fifth grade. So the overwhelming majority of applications then are coming from fourth graders, and we know that is sorry, I'm trying to turn off my phone here. That, that is when they come in, that is when they apply, and there have been some changes to make it a little easier, but there's still some confusion there. So I, I really think it's hard to compare where families are applying for ninth grade, when the overwhelming majority of families might not even be bothering to apply for city honors, when there's fewer than, than I think 30 seats become available between eighth and ninth grade. So I, I don't think that's quite a fair comparison to, to look at where they're applying to, if they don't feel like there's, there's possibility of getting a seat there. But it is the only international baccalaureate program in the city. And I don't know how we say that there are enough seats when school Mikowski 99 is the only elementary IB program. And coming up through fourth grade, there's about 100, I think, I don't know if it's 130, 140 seats in the IB program in the fourth grade at Mikowski, and there are 90 seats available in fifth grade at city honors. So we see there, there's not enough IB seats for students who have already started on this IB plan. And the overwhelming number of those kids can't even get into city honors, which is just what, three blocks away? They can't get in because of the other kids, either from Olmstead or from other private. It used to be, before we started making some changes, that only 40% of the kids coming in were Buffalo public schools, and the other 60 were elsewhere. And I know that's flopped. But that's still only 60% of the seats coming into city honors are Buffalo public school kids. And they're not coming from Mikowski, who is going, are going to this IB program. So I really struggle with this argument that we don't need more seats and to not need another school. To me, and we've said this a couple of times in a couple of places, the ideal would be to have a separate middle school, to pull city honors middle school out of city honors and have a standing city IB middle school program. There's a specific curriculum, the middle years program, curriculum for IB that you could, Mikowski kids could come into, and then maybe add some more seats, some more kids, that would give the city honors high school additional room to expand. I truly believe you don't need to expand it a lot. I don't know how many more kids would come into an IB high school program. It's a very challenging program. We do have other high schools with programs that are fitting to our kids. I don't know how many of those kids who stayed from fifth through eighth would automatically stay for ninth if it was in a different building. It's quite possible. But some of those kids who've been in the IB middle school would pick another high school, and that would be completely appropriate. I don't think that the way we do the placement for the, for city honors, for IB, is really meeting the needs of our kids. And I, I do agree that we don't know what that need would be because we haven't actually asked. That given the opportunity, how many kids provided all the programs that they would need to be successful would then choose that. But I really do not believe that middle school and IB middle school program at city honors is meeting the needs of our city. And I think that's what I wanted to say. My only question, I think, remaining question that I still haven't gotten clarity about with the numbers of kids at, at city honors is when I, we see the numbers so far, from what I've seen, the special ed kids have been linked with gen ed kids. And we know that in terms of gen ed is disproportionately low for our minority students, and special ed is disproportionately high. So I would like to see those numbers separated so that we could actually get a true picture of those numbers in our building. Thank you.
Yeah, and so, Council, Chairperson Bowman, in three minutes, I'm not going to be able to cover all the points, but I will give you a three-minute version, and hopefully you'll bring me back to kind of talk in detail about, you know, what the real concern is. So just to be real clear, this is a book that Dr. Gary Orfield wrote called Discrimination in Elite Public Schools, The Buffalo Investigating Buffalo. So Council President, Councilmember Wyatt, I'll come back to, I'll come back to another meeting and share with you, you're reading the New York City article. I can go point for point and show you those same things taking place in Buffalo right now. And I want to be fair. I think Dr. Krestes makes a very valid point that there has been improvement. There's no question under Dr. Cash's leadership, we have made progress overall as a district. But when it comes to city honors and dealing with the disproportionality of city honors, that is not the case. He said that I was advocating for an additional city honors. No, that's not something that I personally was advocating for. We brought in a expert, the Office of Civil Rights brought in an expert, Dr. Gary Orfield. He made a recommendation. It was his professional recommendation as an expert that we needed an additional city honors. Dr. Krestes disagreed with him and, you know, made an argument against it. But, you know, so, so at the end of the day, there's no question about that there are some issues that Dr. Orfield brought up that continue to exist that cause the disproportionality. One of them, for example, is that there's a neighborhood preference for children who go to the, to the lower Olmstead school, Olmstead 64, I believe. And so that if you live in that North Buffalo neighborhood, the wealthiest neighborhood in our district, you know, you get a neighborhood preference and a sibling preference to get into that school, similar to what goes on in New York City. And the majority of students who go to city hours come from that school. You know, come from Olmstead school, similar to what goes on in New York City. There is a, so they talked about a neighborhood preference. They talked about a entrenched inequity. There's entrenched inequity. This is an issue that we've brought up for years and years and years, to the point that you're making about that particular student. That story that you're talking about, Councilmember Wyatt, happens over and over again. As a matter of fact, when Dr. Krestes and his team talked, they said that the changes they made would increase the number of African-American students in city honors. And in fact, it decreased the numbers of African-American students for three consecutive years. So they didn't take the, all the recommendations of the expert who said, if you did all of this, it will increase the numbers. They put in their own recommendations, and they actually got more inequity. So we have a segregated school system. You, Dr. Cash, Dr. Krestes laid it out to you perfectly. Where we have the most white students, you know, like he laid out at Olmstead, Da Vinci, Hutch Tech, city honors, we have double the number of, and if city honors almost triple the number of white students in those schools than we do at the other schools. And those are the top performing schools. So wherever the white students are at, we have, we see that they have a, they get a better quality education. So I, I can go on and on in, in covering all the stuff that Dr. Orfield talked about, but I just want to reiterate your point, Councilmember Wyatt. There, those issues that you saw in that article exist in Buffalo. I think Dr. Cat, Dr. Krestes stated, stated in the form that we still have room for improvement. Particularly for African-American students, but I do want to acknowledge that progress has been made, but it's not nearly enough. And if we would have, if we would have, last point, if we would have implemented all of the recommendations that Dr. Orfield recommended, and, and those, he documented that. So if you want to go back, and I'll bring a point-by-point documentation to another committee. He put it for the record because what he saw Buffalo was so extreme in terms of the effort to maintain a status quo. You understand? That he had to put a record down so people would know the history of what actually took place when we tried to change something to make it fair for African-Americans in the city of Buffalo.
Thank you, Mr. Radford. Get right to you, Councilmember Wyatt. But yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Radford, thank you for that. You know, as we talk about, you know, the changes that are, have to happen in our country, we talk about police reform, we talk about systemic racism. We know that education is not exempt from that. And so when I asked a question to you about this article, it's not one or two parents that came to me about city honors. And yeah, there's other options, but again, the story that this talked about, this young lady, this was her ideal school, and she wasn't able to get there. I believe we have 51% or 50% almost African-Americans who are in our system. And for these schools to have a small portion of African-Americans, and it speaks volumes. I mean, there's no two ways. I mean, there's no two ways about it. You have fifty percent of people of color living in the city of Buffalo, but they're only a small portion in the schools. I mean, I don't know what else to say. I mean, it's like black and white. You know, and but but I know it's not as simple as what this article, because this article, when you read it, it's like it's so much. You know, it's political, it's 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 privilege, it's all these other pieces. And how do we get to the bottom line of how do we make sure children are educated? How do we make sure that parents who want who have a desire for their child to be in a certain discipline are able to go? It's not to me, it is not up to the school district to say, oh, there's another school. If I want my child to go to City Honors, I would hope that my child can get into City Honors, especially if I'm paying city taxes. Now, I know that there are students who live outside the city that go to City Honors. Is that true? That's not true?
There are not students, uh, you can't take the test uh to get into Olmstead or City Honors if you do not live in the city of Buffalo. That wasn't always the case, but that changed about seven years ago. And then, Mr. Chairman, when when everyone's done, I just want to wrap up and and make a couple of uh respond to a couple of comments.
So I'm just going to leave it because I know, Councilmember, I want to be respectful of what you say that. I would love to have Mr. Rafford to come back to hear some more because I I think that, again, although I'm not a school board member. Um, I do represent people in my district who have, again, come to me a number of times about this opportunity they weren't able to take advantage of. And we have to look at how do we come up with a better process and how this happens. Because if Mr. Rafford is telling me that we have, we've made some progress. But sometimes we say we made some progress, but it's not progress that we really think that is valued. You know, because sometimes we got to say, you know, well, we get, we did this much. What else do you want? Well, we want a whole lot more. If we got fifty percent of students of color in a district and we only have a small ten percent or eleven percent or twelve percent in a school. I I don't, I think that speaks to a a serious problem. And if we have an expert who come and make recommendations and we don't use those recommendations, I'm just questioning, what is our plan? Because if the plan is not working and we're making mark, not in leaps. It's some, it is some incremental changes, but if we have an expert giving us information, we don't take it. I just have the question, why didn't we take that that uh that recommendation? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Wyatt, and I I definitely don't want it to feel like I'm trying to cut this conversation short. It's an important conversation and I'm even willing to, you know, we could have a meeting outside of this. But I'll definitely have you back, Mr. Rafford, to, you know, continue on this conversation. I mean, it sounds like, you know, Dr. Cressy's and Superintendent is, uh, they're they're willing to, you know, work with us on this, which is uh great to hear. So I'll go to Councilmember Wingo, then Dr. Cressy's.
Just real quick, we just had a uh civil service committee meeting regarding the residency of the employees of the fire department. Uh, we also kind of digressed and talked about the police department in 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 brief. However, uh, we do know uh that there were students in City Honors who do not live in the city of Buffalo. Who were who literally families live in Canada. Who moved in with family members in the city of Buffalo so that their children could go to City Honors. So I don't, I don't want anybody to be disillusioned or to think that 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 all of the students in City Honors originated in Buffalo, lived in Buffalo. Because that's just simply not the case. And if the phone calls I received in my office from the last five years as a council member mean anything. Some of them have to do specifically, Councilmember Wyatt, with residency issues in City Honors. Some parents of of the students who went to City Honors in my district, anecdotally speaking, have told me personal testimony. That they know for a fact that their children's peers do not live in the city of Buffalo. That they do live, because these students, they talk to each other, they do live outside of Buffalo, they do not live in the United States of America. So I don't want anybody to be disillusioned to think that this is not something that's real or that's happening because it is happening and it has happened. If the the prevalence of it happening may have decreased, but no, Councilmember Wyatt, that was a very, very valid question. And I just hope that we can answer that honestly, because if we're not keeping up with the truant students as effectively as we could. How are we keeping up with the address of the students who actually are going to City Honors and these other criteria based schools? Mr. Chair, thank you for that brief moment.
Thank you, Councilmember Wingo, Dr. Cressy's.
Lot, there's a lot going on in your meeting today, Mr. Chairman. And I'm and I'm doing the best I can uh to make sure that you get comprehensive and accurate answers. First of all, I would say any taxpayer, certainly any civic leader or elected official. Who is in possession of information about a student or family. That is defrauding the Buffalo Public Schools with regard to residency. You have a duty to share that with the district so that we can act on it. So uh my my response to that is if you, you know, please don't hold that information. Uh, yourself, because you you really don't have the right to do that. You should share it with the school district. We have a process of making sure that uh students, when it is ascertained, are not residents of the city of Buffalo. Doesn't matter if it's City Honors, it's any school. Uh, that they are removed from the enrollment of our school district. That is a very clear state authorized process. Uh, and you know, so so please, if you have that information. Don't blame us because you kept it and you didn't make us aware of it. If a child is and parents are defrauding the Buffalo Public Schools from enrollment at any school. Then it's your duty to share it with us so that we can act on it. Last thing I want to leave you with. I guess it's just two points of 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 hope in the data. Because I I really, if you don't, if you don't bring numbers, I I brought numbers today and I just happen to have them. You know, I had no idea what was going to be discussed today, but these numbers, I have them all around myself because they're important numbers. But here are two very important numbers that I want to leave you with. And Dr. Mistrata alluded to one of them. Several years ago, and I'll use City Honors as an example. The number of Buffalo Public School children who ended up going to City Honors was between thirty-five and forty percent. And kids coming from not outside the city, but coming from private schools mainly. Made up the other sixty or sixty-five percent. Today, that has been completely inverted because of the efforts under Dr. Cash. That have taken place to create access and opportunity for our students to have all the opportunity they need or want. To access not only City Honors, but all of our schools, all of our schools. And that is now flipped. It is now sixty forty in favor of Buffalo Public School students. The last piece of data I want to leave you with, which is very promising. And I don't want you to disregard it because you have to, you have to assume knowledge. If you're going to be vocal on an issue, get familiar with the whole issue. Last year, for the first time, the majority of students who came in in fifth grade, that's the matriculating grade for City Honors. Two years ago, were majority non-white students. For the first time, the class edged slightly over. Uh, white students with regard to who was in the majority in that entering class. And that's important for us because it means that more families are taking advantage of the opportunities that are available to them. So I leave you with those numbers only because while there's a lot of work to do and we're the first ones to embrace. That uh excitement around this type of work. Uh, I want to make sure you understand that the progress is real and that students are making the choices that they make. Um, around not just one school, but around all of the schools that are available in our in our district. And I would encourage you to think more broadly and more openly about what's available in our district. And stop thinking uh so unilaterally on one school. We have to address disproportionality wherever it exists. But uh I wanted to leave you with those numbers because those are important changes and they're changes to build on.
Can we, Mr. Chairperson, can we get a clarification on one of those numbers? Because uh because uh Dr. Mistrata alluded to this earlier. When you say more than half of the students were minority uh that got into the school two years ago. Are you talking about of the general education students and the special education students? Or are you talking about just the general education students?
It it would have been the students who entered through the competitive admissions process for fifth grade. For the first, for the first time, it was majority by a small amount, but it was a majority non-white.
So you said, what percentage of them were African American?
It, I don't, I don't have the exact number from that. I can tell you that it was disproportional to the district. What I'm trying to do is explain to you that, you know, progress, you 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 may not like that it's incremental, neither do we. We want it to happen yesterday. But while we attach our urgency around it, we want to share with you numbers that exemplify the progress that's being made. Because it proves we need to keep building on the strategies that we're using. Um, and I and I just want you to have that information because it's good information.
No, I I'm only asking because I want to celebrate with you if we had an increase in the number of African American students who were accepted. Um, if we haven't had it, I also want it to be transparent and give accurate information. So if we had a the largest proportional increase of African American students in the history of City Honors. Two years ago, I would just like that to be stated clearly if we have it.
We did, we didn't, and I don't want to leave you with that impression.
Thank you.
Uh, and and I don't want to give you some type of false impression of what to celebrate. And and this isn't so much about celebrating, I'm just trying to share with you. Uh, the movement in the data points to access and opportunity. It's not about celebrating one's, you know, group of children uh over another group of children. So I I hope that's not what any of us do around this issue. But it is around embracing proportionality as a very significant goal for a district like ours to have. And I want to give you assurance, Mr. Chairman, and and to your colleagues on the common council. That that is exactly what this district has embraced very aggressively, very enthusiastically. And we're not there yet, but we need to keep working at it.
Thank you, Doctor. A last question from Councilmember Wyatt.
Um, Mr. Chair, um, Dr. Cressy, and you made a good point. I'm a numbers guy. Um, and I know that Mr. Rafford talked about the initial filing with civil rights, it was twenty percent. Then he talked about then the years after subsequent where the numbers decreased. You know, if if that's the facts and those are the numbers, then, you know, you talk about how we've improved, but it just seems like those numbers don't speak to that.
I don't know that those are the numbers over the long haul. Sometimes there's a dip in a particular year. That's a, that's a incorrect way to look at data. You've got to look at trends over time, uh, not just, you know, an immediate year after you do something. Um, but but with that said, it's very important, and I want to be clear, okay? Um, you're not going to find Dr. Cash or me defending numbers that are not proportional. We will explain the progress in the district, we will explain uh the work of the district around this issue. But we're not going to, you know, uh, dig in and defend numbers. So please, and and I'm not saying you're doing this, Councilmember Wyatt, you're not. Uh, but but I don't want anyone to create an impression that the district is dug in on something. We're not dug in on anything except access and opportunity for every student. So as Mr. Wyatt said, I don't want any child that's heartbroken with their aspirations. And neither does Dr. Cash and neither does any member of the board. So, you know, we're all on the same team on this issue. Stop dividing this community around issues that really, you know, are about maybe something else. This is about all of us embracing the same aspirations and we want access and opportunity. And we want proportion to represent the great city that we live in.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Councilmember Wyatt, the last one, real last one.
Did you mean Wingo or Wyatt?
Uh, Wyatt, Wyatt, or Wingo, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. All right, all right. And so, listen, this is about, uh, you know, race matters. Race does matter. Race matters. And in this instance, uh, again, we don't expect anyone to defend the disproportionality of the African American students in the district. However, uh, there was no improvement for the increase in the number of African American students at City Honors. That is a fact. And again, I I I I agree with uh Mr. Rafford when he said, listen, we want to celebrate the progress. And Mr. Cressy's was right when he said that that is not a way to look at data uh as it relates to looking at one piece of data, look at the whole picture. We understand that. And the whole picture is telling us that there has not been much improvement. As a matter of fact, there has been a regression of black students at City Honors. So please, um, this is a a race matter issue. And we are advocating for a particular ethnic group of students, which are African American students. Which are customarily and uh uh traditionally uh treated disproportionately from all the other students. So that's what this is about. And I hope, let me be very clear. I hope that this is all of our intention to sure and to ensure that we see equity across the board. Uh, even when it comes to these criteria based schools, that there is a representation of African Americans in these schools. For the parents who live in Buffalo, the parents who pay taxes of these students who want to get to these uh criteria based schools. And with that said, I, we are celebrating if there is progress. But if there is no progress based off of the recommendations of the OCR, then we need to make sure that, again. Like it was been stated before, that we are transparent in what we're saying and not trying to construe things so that it looks like the district cares. But the district doesn't really put forth the effort that they say they're putting forward. Because no one's been participating in the process that will make sure that the parents are being heard on these issues. So if we're going to talk about data, let's not bring anecdotal data, let's bring empirical data and other other type of data that we can actually prove and show. That will suggest that there has been progress made. Remember, Mr. Chairman, I'm all done, I'm done.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. I certainly suggest we table this uh moving forward. We'll definitely continue this this discussion. Uh, we'll bring more data forward. I'm open to a meeting uh between all of us, you know, even even off the record and having a a conversation about how we can all. Uh, work together to move this effort forward. So I may have a motion to table. Second. Yep, second by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number four, uh, regarding district academies for withdrawn students.
John, um, at this point, um, I believe Dr. Cressy's has a um, someone here speak on. Um, the virtual learning academies, um, we have a representative from Say Yes to talk about some of the um things that they've been doing.
This item is open.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, and we're just postponing the presentation on our virtual academies till next month. Uh, there's a timeliness around the Say Yes work with regard to virtual learning centers. So I want to introduce uh Dan Cross Viola from Say Yes.
Welcome, Dan.
My name is Dan Cross Viola. I am the Director of Extended Learning and Quality Improvement Say Yes. And would love to share with you some of the work that's going on in these virtual learning support centers. I'm sure many of you uh are aware, we received a grant from the county, which is funding through the CARES Act. To open up a network of these virtual learning support centers across the city. And we have since contracted with thirty different providers across the city to host forty-eight sites across the city for as many as twenty-five hundred sixty-five students. And as of uh today, thirty-six of these forty-eight sites are now open. We will have six more open by the end of this week. Two more to be open on this coming Monday, and then there are four that their open date is is to be determined, but should be in the next couple of weeks. We are still trying to figure out a couple of details with those with those sites. These programs will be open through December thirtieth and they they run Monday through Friday, seven thirty AM to four thirty PM. Um, but most of these sites do actually have an extended day beyond those those hours, but that is the core block of time of these programs will be open. They are serving kindergarten through eighth grade students. And that could be students at any school. I, we have an emphasis on BPS students, but any any school student is is welcome in these centers. The the centers will be really facilitating the students' participation in the remote learning. So if the child has district provided devices, um, they'll be able to get into wifi to use those devices. If they do not have those devices, they can get on devices at the center and and uh access the program and that in that way. We also are making sure the the site staff are being trained by BPS on how to best support students in that remote learning. So log on support, understand the platforms, all that kind of thing. The centers will also be providing meals, so breakfast, lunch and snack or dinner daily. And they will be doing some other enrichment activities around that remote learning as um as the schedule provides. There is staffing there, uh, required one to ten ratios, so one staff every ten. There is staffing there, uh, required one to ten ratios, so one staff every ten students with an extra staff person for every twenty students. And all sites are working, either they're, either have a school age childcare license right now or they have a daycare license right now, or they're working towards that school age childcare license. For those sites that are not currently licensed, they are operating a single purpose program, which would be, uh, is allowed by the Office of Child and Family Services. As far as the enrollment goes, uh, I talked about the fact that K through eight students are the ones that are eligible from any school. But one additional piece there is that this program is free for families whose income is, is at or below eighty-five percent of the state median income. And for families that are above that rate, sites are allowed to charge up to fifty dollars per child per day. Uh, but many of our sites are actually charging less than that, if not keeping it free for all families regardless of income. And I will direct you to our website, uh, sayyesbuffalo.org/supportcenters, and I can put the, the link in the chat in a second. Uh, but that website has, um, a, a map of where all the sites are, it has the list of all the sites, um, including, um, what the cost is for those families above the eighty-five percent, um, state median income. Has a chart on their website to help families see what that income amounts to for their family size. Um, and just has all the contact information for those sites and everything like that. One other thing that I would really focus on here is that the health and safety is a huge piece of the equation for these virtual learning support centers. Um, we do on that same website, I just, uh, referenced, we have a link to our five page document on the health and safety protocols. Let's go over them real briefly. Um, before camp starts, we are collecting a detailed health history from every single student enrolled and identifying those students who may have, um, underlying health concerns that we should be aware of. And we're creating individual health plans for those students that kind of, uh, that detail everything day to day, but in particular how we respond should there be exposure to COVID nineteen in a site. We're also creating an emergency communication system at each site in case there is a need to rapidly communicate with families. And we're doing a lot of education with families and staff alike around all the health and safety protocols, um, COVID nineteen symptoms. Um, what, uh, when it's appropriate to, to attend program, when it's not, all those kind of things. And then during camp, we have very scripted protocols around arrival and dismissal, daily health checks, healthy hygiene practices, social distancing, cleaning and disinfecting. It's a very detailed, um, plan that's, that's, uh, embedded and founded upon Department of Health, uh, CDC, Office of Child and Family Services, all their guidance and regulations are, um, uh, embedded in that, in that, those protocols. And lastly, we have a contingency plan in place. Should a site be exposed to a confirmed case of COVID nineteen, everything that we're doing is preventing, is trying to prevent that from happening. But should it happen, we do have a plan in place, um, for how to handle that. And it does involve closing down that site entirely for a period of at least three days and doing a, a, um, a site wide deep cleaning to disinfect it and make sure that it is, is safe to reopen. The other thing I'll say about health and safety is that we do have on staff a licensed practical nurse who is serving as our health coordinator. And she is actually a BPS school nurse as well. She has required all sites to take our safe health and safety protocols and to in turn create a safety plan that details how they will implement those protocols at their site. And she is signing off on that once she feels it is satisfactory. Is also going out to every single site to do a site visit, um, to make sure that, uh, the site itself is, is, um, in good standing. And only once those two things have happened will she certify it to open. And then once they are open and, and, um, serving students, there's ongoing monitor going. Um, the health director, health coordinator is going out to do on and off site business on a regular basis. She's reviewing their site records to make sure they're following all the protocols. She's also having them, um, submit incident reports for anything, uh, health and safety related, and we are processing them as needed. And the last piece is that there will be corrective action taken if a site warrants it. This could include anything from us, uh, providing some consultation in the form of, of assistance from, um, other professionals that, uh, are very seasoned in the field, um, upwards to more severe corrective action of closing a site down for a period of days or even indefinitely if the severity warrants it.
Thank you, Dan. We're right up against the deadline. We have to start on, um, legislation, but thank you so much for your presentation. Um, thank you for all that you're doing. We'll definitely work to get, uh, the website out so, uh, viewers are familiar with, uh, the locations that are, are available to them. So thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Cressy's for, uh, preparing this today. And, uh, can I have a motion to table this item?
Motion to table.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski and a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski. Thank you all.